Alderman Ship.
Here.
Alderman Geenan.
Present.
Alderman Clark.
Here.
Alderman Mayberry.
Here.
Alderman Spaghetti.
Here.
Alderman Talonair. He was here.
Yep.
Mayor Tomes.
Here.
You have a quorum.
Thank you. If we could do the Pledge Allegiance, please, and then a moment of silence.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Remain standing for a moment of silence, please. Thank you very much. Item number five.
Minutes of the May 14th, 2018 meeting.
Who do approve the minutes as printed?
Second.
Move to second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carries. Item six.
Minutes of the executive session of May 14th, 2018.
Move to approve the executive session minutes.
Second.
Move to second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Update Rock Island. Bear with me, we have a few items here. Whitewater Junction opening. Whitewater Junction Aquic Center season opening is Saturday, May 26th, 2018. Whitewater Junction is a zero-depth to nine-foot pool, featuring slides and fun for the whole family. Grab your swimsuit and head out Memorial Weekend with your family and friends. You can call 309-732-SWIM for more information. Holiday observance schedule. In observance of Memorial Day, City Hall will be closed Monday, May 28th, 2018. The Refuge Recycling and Yardway schedule will be one day late all week. The city of Rock Island wishes everyone a very happy and safe Memorial Weekend. Rockin' into the summer. May 31st, 2018 is the last day of school in Rock Island Myland and the first day of our Rockin' Library Summer. Join us at from 4:30 to 7:00 PM in the parking lot of the Rock Island Downtown Library for Libraries Rock Summer Registration. Prizes, water, popcorn, and treats from the Vibrant Credit Union Ice Cream Truck will be offered, along with a performance by Riding Atlas from 5:00 PM to 6:30 PM. This local teen band has played at youth showcases for the International Blues Challenge in Memphis. Happy Joes and Scratch Cupcakes Curbside will also be on hand with goodies for purchase. Bring a lawn chair and stay for a while, the fun movies, fun moves inside in the event of rain. Please call 309-732-7323 for more information. Laura's Legacy, ALC Benefit Concert. Laura's Legacy is returning for its seventh annual event to Sreberg Park, Riverfront Park in downtown Rock Island on June 2nd, 2018. This event, hosted by the Rock Island Parks and Recreation Department, in partnership with Lizzie, Lizzie has raised more than $73,000 over the last six years. Attendees of all ages will enjoy the live music from Lizzie and three other, other artists. Come out and support this great cause with food, family, fun right on the Mississippi River. Gates open at 3:00 PM and tickets are $10. Cash only and free for children under the age of 12 with a paid adult. Food will be available for purchase and Bent River Brewing Company will be selling wine, beer, and spirits. For more information, please call 309-732-7275. And for those that don't know, Lizzie Morris is a local here in Rock Island and has done well and overseas and everywhere else, had sold a lot of records and has done a great job for herself, so we have a local person. Citizens of the Year. As a reminder, time is running out to nominate that special person for the 2018 Citizen of the Year Award, sponsored by the mayor and city council. To learn more and nominate someone, (cough) excuse me, go to www.rigov.org/COY. The deadline for receiving nominations is June 8th, 2018. If you have questions, please call Committee Co-Chairs. Alderman Dylan Parker at 309-738-3416, or Dave Geenan at 309-738-4569, or City Clerk Judith Gilbert at 309-732-2010. That's it for right now. Thank you. Item eight.
Briefing on the 22nd Annual WHO News Radio Tractor Ride by Quad Cities Convention and Visitors Bureau.
Good evening, Council. My name is Nikki Ellis and I'm the Sales Manager for the Quad Cities Convention and Visitors Bureau. Joe Taylor apologizes for not being able to be here this evening, but along with him and myself, thank you for a moment of your time. We just wanted to take a brief moment and brief you on an event that will be coming to the Quad Cities, June 23rd through 27th. The event is the 22nd Annual WHO News Tractor Ride. The radio station is iHeart Media radio station, and they were the first agriculture-focused station in the state of Iowa. Every June, they come together, farmers and tractor enthusiasts alike, they come from all over the country to embark on a few days' journey throughout the state of Iowa. And the Quad Cities was lucky enough to win it this year, and not only are they exploring a little bit of Iowa, they're also venturing into the state of Illinois. So we're pretty lucky that they're venturing that, because they don't often do that. This year, the Isle Casino Hotel will be hosting the tractor riders and their families. It's estimated about 500 tractor riders, as well as 1,000 people, will be in attendance for this event. They arrive on Saturday, June 23rd, and Monday, the 25th, through Wednesday, the 27th, they embark on hub-and-spoke tours throughout the two states. And, oh, along with that, on Wednesday is the day that they are coming through Rock Island. They're going to be accessing Centennial Bridge, and then we've already worked with the Rock Island Arsenal. I'm going to do a quick parade across the arsenal and then go into Illinois and explore some of the John Deere attractions while they're in town. In total, the event is projected to bring about $240,000 to our community, as well as a potential for them to come back as future visitors. So I just want to thank you, for those of you who have already helped us at the CVB and with iHeart Media on this event thus far, and we look forward to hosting them on a successful ride through the QC Metro area. If any of you have any questions, feel free to reach out to me at the CVB and I'd be happy to answer them. Thanks for your time.
Thank you. Okay, number nine.
Presentation of the May Keep Rock Island Beautiful Award.
Good morning, I'm Paul Hanson with Keep Rock Island Beautiful. We do a litter scan annually, we drive all over the city, and we, we take a look at how much litter, we quantify that for Keep America Beautiful, and we're, have a pretty clean city. Thank you all very much for your hard work. And at that time, we also select a, a school that is representative of the cleanest school in the city. And this year, we have chosen Thurgood Marshall Learning Center, and we'd like to...
On behalf of Thurgood Marshall Learning Center and my principal, Philip Ambrose, I just want to thank you for acknowledging us and the work that we are putting in to make Keep Rock Island Beautiful. It is not myself that could do the, the work, I have children that is actually out there and picking up and cleaning up and doing the work, so, once again, I just want to thank you for acknowledging us on behalf of Thurgood Marshall.
Would you like a photo op there or anything, or?
I would love one, thank you.
Not that I need to be in it.
No, I, I do want you in it, as a matter of fact.
All right, we have item number 10.
Presentation of the 2017 Rock Island Historic Preservation Awards.
Would you like to join me?
Sure.
Hello, my name's Martin Bush, and I'm the President of the Rock Island Preservation Society. I would like to thank the Council and Mayor Tomes for allowing us the opportunity to present our Historic Preservation Awards in celebration of Historic Preservation Month. The Historic Preservation Awards are intended to recognize and commend those individuals and groups who have worked to preserve and restore historic structures in our community. The awards are given primarily for exterior improvements that were completed in the previous year, 2017 in this case. This year, we are presenting three Historic Preservation Awards and two Certificates of Recognition. Recipients, as you are announced, please come forward to receive your award and then stay in the front, because we will take a photo with the entire group afterward. The first Preservation Award goes to Fred W. Waller III from 4005 30A Street for his special efforts to restore the historic red barn on his property. The barn, dating back to 1848, is older than nearly all buildings in the city. It is part of the pioneer settler William Carr's estate. Although nearly 170 years old, although nearly 170 years had taken its toll on the barn, Fred was committed to completely rebuild and restore it. He removed large areas of siding to repair rotted areas of the post and beam structure and completely rebuilt the roof. This has restored and stabilized this historic barn so that it may last another 170 years. I don't believe Fred is here tonight. The second Preservation Award goes to Josh and Kelly Brugan for the work on their house at 930 20th Street. Some in the Broadway neighborhood call this the Geode House, because they knew of the magnificent original woodwork inside, even though the exterior was hidden under fake brick siding for, for decades. When they purchased the home, Josh and Kelly took on the task of restoring the exterior. The tar paper siding was removed, damaged and missing trim replaced, and the porch was completely restored. For decades, the porch had been supported by real, supported by steel posts and railings, and later wood four-by-fours. The new porch has classic round wood beams with an appropriate railing. A period-inspired paint job adds a finishing touch. The cracked front driveway was also restored. Today, the house is as beautiful outside as it is inside. Are Josh and Kelly here? Okay. The third Preservation Award goes to Carla Dakin for her work she has done to the house at 842 19th Street. This award recognizes the restored and rebuilt front porch, especially the addition of appropriate columns and railings. For many years, the porch roof had been supported with plain four-by-fours, and the railing was a simple lumber, was simple lumber with nailed-on wood ballisters. During a major renovation, not only was the roof replaced and the house painted historically appropriate colors, but the porch was completely rebuilt to be more compatible with the original American four-square design of the home. Round columns and a mortise railing were incorporated. Although this is a rental property, Carla has given it the same TLC as her own home. Is Carla here? Please come forward.
Thank you.
Oh, you bet. Oh, congratulations. Beautiful.
Thank you.
Moving on to the Certificates of Recognition. The first Certificate of Recognition goes to Ernie Seigos for the work he, he has done on the Wyshaw Apartments at 735 20th Street. The historic Wyshaw Apartment Building still had original oak exterior doors, but they were weathered and discolored. The doors on both the front and the secondary entrance on the side underwent extensive restoration and refinishing to bring them back to their original appearance. A new brass kick plate ensures a long life for these doors, and new brass numbers enhance their appearance. Ernie here? The second Certificate of Recognition goes to John and Kathy Rockoff of 541 23rd Street. When the Rockoffs purchased this home, it had a significant amount of restoration completed, but when they examined a historic photo given to them by the previous owner, they discovered something missing in the restoration, an ornate iron roof crest at the highest ridge of their roof. Close examination of the faded photo inspired the design of new cresting, which they had custom-made and installed once again. Are John and Kathy here? That concludes our awards presentation. After the photo, we'd like to invite the honorees and their guests to exit the chambers and join us for a reception downstairs. We would also like to extend an invitation to the Council, to the Council, Mayor Tomes, and city and staff to join us at the conclusion of your meeting. Thank you, and with that, I again congratulate the honorees.
We're on item number 11.
Presentation of the Financial Management Report for the First Quarter of 2018.
Good evening. So, the first quarter report for 2018, first time we get to talk about 2018 budget. So with this being the first quarter, thank you, Tim, we'll start with the revenues, expenditures, and net position for the city. Our benchmark at the first quarter would be 25, 25% of revenues and expenditures, and you will see the first quarter of the year, there are some timing differences, especially with revenues, property taxes, we don't start seeing those until June, end of June, beginning of July from the county. Property tax makes up 23% of the general fund revenue, 33% of parks, so about a third of parks revenue comes from property tax, and then the library, 82% comes from the property tax revenue. Expenditures, there's some timing there, too, especially with seasonal operations and, and parks and MLK and construction season, and a lot of work begins in, in the summer. So with that, we'll start with the general fund overall. General Fund is reporting 19% of revenues received at this point during the year, and 22% of expenditures have, have incurred at this point. TIF, this is a grouping of all of our TIFs, and TIF revenues are actually also property tax-related, that's our increment that comes in to fund the TIFs, so we'll see that a little bit later this year. Expenditures are low at 5%, again, just timing of, of development agreements and such that have not been paid out yet, that are oftentimes tied to property tax payments. At the bottom of this page, debt service, a very low 1% of, of revenues, 0% of expenditures, and that's also, again, the timing. Our debt service payments are due later in the year, so we haven't paid those yet. Revenues for the debt service fund come from other funds, as those payments come due, accounting will perform their magic and, and transfer those funds. The second page has our proprietary funds, fiduciary funds, and component units. We'll talk about Water Works, Water, just for a moment here. Revenues and expenditures are low when you look at budget, but there is a very large IEP A-funded project underway there, where the IEP A loan proceeds will reimburse the city once those, once those payments are made. Skip down here to fiduciary funds, pension trust funds, revenues low, that is, most of that revenue budgeted is property tax for the employer portion of those funds, so that'll come a little bit later in the year. And actually, really, this is one where we're running over on expenditures that's related to some losses with the market and some disability expenses. Both boards are, are pursuing, are undergoing some disability hearings, and we've had a couple of actives take pensions and port them out to other, other departments, so we've transferred those. So for the government-wide financial statements, we look at the very bottom row, total city position. We're at 15% of revenues and 16% of expenditures, very similar to where we were last year at this point, we were at 14% of each. Right now, our actual expenditures do exceed revenues, 4.6 million, and we have approximately $21.4 million in cash and investments available to fund our operations. On the schedule, where we do break down the general fund departments, you'll see all of the departments listed. Overall, in the total, we're at 22% of, of expenditures, which is good, because we have one extra payroll in this first quarter. All the departments are within 25%, so no one is over at this point. Good news. So next, we'll move on to the state and local tax revenue analysis. We do always look at nine different state and local tax revenues, just to kind of look and see where we're headed right now and compared to budget. This schedule has a nice graphical representation, but also those first columns have the five-year average, which is nice to look at. As we go through each of the tax revenues tonight, I will just draw your attention to some changes, since this is the first time you're seeing these taxes in this representation for 2018, so we will talk a little bit about what has changed from 2017. So income tax. Income tax for the first quarter is tracking pretty well compared to our $3.7 million budget, right at the 25%. We do continue to watch this carefully, as last year's budget was 4.1 million, so about $400,000 more. The state did impose a 10% income tax reduction last year, and they've made some changes in their accounting software, and there's been some tax laws that have also impacted income tax. We, there are mixed opinions about whether the 10% income tax reduction will continue. There was an email that came out from IML today urging all of you and all of us to reach out to our legislators and remind them to fulfill their promise to local municipalities, so there's my plug, to spend a little bit of time doing that. Replacement tax is exceeding budget at, at this time, so that looks good. This is a volatile tax, it's, it's, while we budgeted $2.3 million this year, that number was about $2.6 million last year, and you can see that we're below the five-year average. So again, a volatile tax, it's not paid out every month, it's one of those ones where the state likes to change the formula, and they did announce in August that it would be reduced by 23%, which we are seeing. With sales tax. So sales tax and local option sales tax, both are holding their own, while it does, you can see that they are running below that 25% point. That was the same scenario last year, and while you can't see it on the face of, of this schedule, as I looked at where we were last year, for the first quarter, sales tax distributions were about 667,000, so we're about 30,000 over that, which is good. And then on the local option sales tax, the first quarter distributions were 496,000, so we have some good news, good news there. Use tax continues to be a good news tax. You can see that we budgeted $980,000 this year, that's well above the five-year average, and at the first quarter, we are at 28% of our total budget. And then municipal utility tax is that not-so-good, good one. We are, while, we are above the, the budget, this is one where we have continually lowered that budget, and you can see that we're below that five-year average, just a product of, of weather and, and rates and things like that. Telecom tax, this is one that doesn't look so great, and it is also a tax that continues to decline, we are lagging behind that 25% point. But food and beverage, while we are lagging behind that 25% point, we did raise the budget this year, because we have seen a continual uptick, uptick in the food and beverage tax. Last year's actual, if I can remember, was right around this 905,000, I think it was 908 or 909 at year end. Last but not least is our gaming tax revenue. So we're at nearly the 25% collection rate, so that's pretty good. Budget is 4.4 million, last year, collection was 4.5 million, so I, I am cautiously optimistic as we look at the totals here, that are, while it's early in the year, I'm cautiously optimistic that we will meet our, our budgets in each of these. Some will be up, some will be down. This is right about where our collections were last year at this point, I think it was 5.4, 5.452 was this number last year, so pretty good with all of these reductions that we knew were coming and, and, and therefore budgeted. So we have two more reports to look over real quick. The next one is the Capital and Major Project Expenditure Status Report, and this is a listing by department of, of some of their projects, some new, some carryovers from prior year. And as I scroll down to the third page of this report, there is a totals, so our total budgeted projects that are in the 2018 budget are just shy of 32 million, with most of it being, falling under Public Works at 31 million, and at this point, year-to-date, we're at 16% completed. The last report is two pages. It covers the city's investments and kind of looking at it in different slices, and so we'll just look at this, at this graph. This is a graphical representation of the city's total cash and investments, and you can see the changes over time. Reminder, this high point in September, this was when bonds were issued, and there was some new money in there for streets, and oftentimes, December, which you do see two, two graphs with the December amount, that's typically the lowest point of the year, and that's when we do have some debt service payments that include principal. We pay those in December. This last page of the schedule, I wanted to point out something that's a little new down here in this bottom pie chart, and, you know, this breaks out the percentage of investments by all the different banks that we have our funds with, and you do see some, some new mentions here, and two of them are credit unions, and so we did reach out to the credit unions late last year, I think it was November, December, and asked if they wanted to be, participate in our competitive CD. Every month, we have CDs that come due, and we bid them out competitively to get the best rate on those CDs, and we asked the credit unions if they wanted to be involved, and several did say yes, and so they're part of our monthly email, and IH and Vibrant have both come in with some interest rates on CDs that exceeded others, so we did award it to them. Do keep in mind that they are also subject to collateralization requirements, and so if they have over $250,000, they do have to provide collateral, and, and they aren't complying with that, so. Any questions?
Regarding the state of Illinois theft of our money with the 10% local government distribution fund, I saw that email today from IML. Do you know, is there any model... Do you know, is there any model resolution or anything available from them calling on our state representatives and senators to protect our money and give it back to us?
I love it when they give us those templates that we can adopt.
I do too.
I haven't seen it, and I thought you were going to ask if they gave a template for email, you know, and not that either, but we'll keep an eye out for it.
Yeah, I guess, I don't know if, if staff wants me to, but if staff could draft a resolution for next council or then following one sometime soon here, calling on the state of Illinois to give us our money, I would greatly appreciate it. Again, if, if you would rather me do it and not staff, I can, but if you want to take the ball, feel free to do so. I fully support a resolution calling on our legislators to give us what's rightly ours. So, we, I mean, it's, we need it, so thank you very much.
Sounds good.
Thank you, Stephanie. We have item number 12.
Proclamation declaring May 21st, 2018 as Roy Plaschert Main Camera Day.
I don't know if Roy is here or not, but, there you go. All right, so, we'll read this off, and then you can come up and you can say a few words, but. So, Roy Plaschert and his wife Catherine, Catherine have been married for 44, nearly 44 years, have two children, Kim and Jeff, and whereas, a lifelong resident of the Quad Cities, Mr. Plaschert, I'd probably get that wrong, graduated from Allman High School, he joined the Air Force soon after and served two tours of duty in Vietnam. And whereas, upon his return from the service, he worked at J I Case for 15 years until it's closing. It was at this point in time, Mr. Plaschert, an excellent photographer himself, purchased main camera, and whereas, throughout the years, he has been very active in Rock Island. He is a member of the St. Pius Church, served on Rock Island's Beautification and Preservation Commissions, and was a longtime supporter of Rock Island Little League, sponsoring main camera teams for many years. And whereas, in December 2017, after owning and operating main camera for over 30 years, Mr. Plaschert decided to retire and close the doors for the final time. Now therefore, be it resolved that I, Mike Tomes, Mayor of the City of Rock Island, do hereby proclaim Monday, May 21st, 2018, as Roy, Roy Plaschert, Main Camera Day, in the City of Rock Island, and while missed this longstanding business, we hope all residents will join us in wishing Plaschert's well in their retirement.
About all I have to say is, I am very surprised and very honored to receive this, and with a last name like Plaschert, it did pay off in basic training. When they called for extra duty, they couldn't pronounce it, so they just skipped over my name. So I'm not the only one.
That's correct. So, thank you all very much. Thank you, Mayor.
We have item 13.
Proclamation declaring June 2018 as Men's Health Month.
I don't know if anybody's here to receive this. Or not. Well, I am, okay, I'm sorry. Oh, I'm going to note it, okay. Well, so, there's nobody here, so we can just note that there, there was a proclamation, I guess, to save time and, and appreciate it, and obviously, at this point, I'll be man up here, but we wish everybody good health. Item 14.
Proclamation declaring June 1st, 2018 as National Gun Violence Awareness Day.
Is there anybody here for that? All right, here we go. We'll try to get this one. Whereas, every day, 96 Americans are killed by gun violence. On an average, there are nearly 13,000 gun homicides every year. And whereas, Americans are 25 times more likely to be killed with guns than people in other developed countries. And whereas, protecting public safety in the communities they serve is our highest responsibility. And whereas, supporting for the Second Amendment right of law-abiding citizens goes hand-in-hand with keeping guns away from dangerous people. And whereas, community leaders and law enforcement officers know their communities best are the most familiar with local criminal activities and how to address it, and are best positioned to understand how to keep their citizens safe. And to, whereas, in January 2013, Hyda Pendleton, a teenager who marched in President Obama's second inaugural parade, was tragically shot and killed just one week later in her hometown of Chicago. She should now celebrate, she would be now celebrating her 21st birthday. And whereas, to honor Hyda, and others who are affected by shootings every day, June 1st, 2018, the first Friday in June, has been designated as the Fourth National Gun Violence Awareness Day. And whereas, the idea of inspired by a group of Hyda's friends.
Hadaya.
Hadaya?
Yes.
Thank you. Who asked their classmates to commemorate her life by wearing orange. They chose this color because hunters wear orange to announce themselves to other hunters when out in the woods, and orange is the color that symbolizes the value of human life. And whereas, anyone can join this campaign by pledging to wear orange to help raise awareness about gun violence and honor their lives of gun violence victims and survivors. And whereas, we renew our commitment to reduce gun violence and pledge to do all we can to keep firearms out of the wrong hands and encourage responsible gun ownership to help keep our children safe. Now therefore, be it resolved that I, Mike Tomes, Mayor of the City of Rock Island, do hereby proclaim Friday, June 1st, 2018, as National Gun Violence Awareness Day, and encourage all citizens to support their local communities' efforts to prevent the tragic effects of gun violence and honor the value of human lives.
Thank you, Mayor Tomes, for issuing this proclamation for us. I have some information cards that I'll leave at the back for anyone who's interested in joining our organization. We are having just kind of like a community potluck on June 2nd at Lincoln Park here in Rock Island to honor victims and survivors of gun violence, so we invite all of you to attend. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Item 15.
A special ordinance establishing a handicap parking space at 2024 33rd Street.
Move to consider suspend the rules and pass the ordinance.
Second. Moved to second. Any discussion? Roll call.
Alderman Parker.
Aye.
Shep.
Aye.
Geenan.
Aye.
Clark.
Aye.
Mayberry.
Yes.
Spargattas.
Yes.
Six eyes, no nays. Motion carried.
Item 16.
A special ordinance establishing a handicap parking space at 2540 20th Avenue.
Move to consider suspend the rules and pass the ordinance.
Second.
Moved to second. Any discussion? Roll call.
Alderman Parker.
Aye.
Shep.
Aye.
Geenan.
Aye.
Clark.
Aye.
Mayberry.
Yes.
Spargattas.
Yes.
Six eyes, no nays. Motion carried.
Item 17.
A resolution urging state and federal elected officials to enact comprehensive legislation for the regulation and taxation of recreational marijuana and the production of industrial hemp.
I'd like to read the resolution here. Whereas, legislation legalizing recreational marijuana use for adults age 21 and older, as well as legislation legalizing the industrial production of hemp, have been introduced in the Illinois General Assembly, as well as the United States Congress. Whereas, industrial hemp was a major industrial crop grown in America since the colonial period and was used for textiles, paper, and rope, and continues to be used this day in fiberboard, construction materials, protein for both humans and livestock, lubricating oils, and energy-producing biomass. Whereas, doctors have prescribed marijuana to treat patients with chronic pain, and peer-reviewed research shows marijuana is much safer than alcohol and tobacco. And whereas, the National Farmers Union has urged the President, Attorney General, and Congress to direct the U S D E A to differentiate between industrial hemp and marijuana, and adopt a policy to allow American farmers to grow industrial hemp under state law without requiring D E A licenses. Whereas, marijuana prohibition has enriched criminal enterprises while draining limited public dollars on arresting, prosecuting, and jailing people for nonviolent drug possession. And whereas, the National Association of State Departments of Agriculture support revisions to the federal rules and regulations authorizing commercial production of industrial hemp, and has urged the D E A to develop and adopt an official definition of industrial hemp that comports with definitions currently used by countries producing hemp. And whereas, nine states and Washington, D.C. have legalized recreational marijuana use, and whereas, states with legal recreational marijuana benefit from the economic activity and jobs created by the sales and production of legal marijuana, and whereas, states with legal recreational marijuana benefit from hundreds of millions of dollars in revenues collected from taxing recreational marijuana. And whereas, in 2016, Colorado collected more than 140 million from taxing legal marijuana sales, Oregon collected more than 60 million, and Washington State collected 256 million. And whereas, allowing the legalization and taxation of recreational marijuana, as well as the growth and production of industrial hemp and related industries and jobs in Illinois would generate hundreds of millions of dollars in new yearly revenue for our state. And whereas, new yearly revenue is needed in order for Illinois and the United States federal government to equitably fund public schools, pensions, and support vital social services. Now therefore, be it resolved that we, the members of this Rock Island City Council, assembled this 21st day of May 2018, do hereby urge Governor Bruce Roner and the Illinois General Assembly, as well as President Donald J. Trump and the United States Congress, to enact comprehensive legislation for the regulation and taxation of recreational marijuana, as well as the industrial production of hemp.
Do we have a motion? Who do adopt the resolution?
Second.
The second. Any discussion?
It's not included in the resolution, however, I think another important fact, and it's somewhat mentioned, but not only the benefits of the positive economics of legalizing recreational marijuana and industrial hemp, but also recognizing the amount of people, specifically people of color, that we've been putting in prison for nonviolent drug possession. Any legislation that legalizes marijuana should also include exonerating people currently sitting in prison for nonviolent drug arrests.
And, you know, I think with the regulation is what you're going on beyond that, Dylan. I was working with an individual that lost a job or couldn't get employment because of a prior record for a minor offense, and I think also beyond the social justice issue, and I've gotten some calls on this resolution this week, we all are going to differ about the morality of many things, but, you know, I think our public policies should be focused on minimizing harm to our individuals and to our community, and the studies are out there that, that this is one way to do that. You're curtailing the underground market with a tightly regulated market, and it's good for Rock Island and for the state of Illinois.
I want to say that at this point, I know myself, you know, I think it's a little premature, even though, excuse me, it's a resolution, it's not set in any ordinance of any sort of thing else, but I think it's premature to set this pace. I think we need more input from the citizens on what their thoughts are. I think there needs to be more input and thought and hearing from what the state's thoughts are. I mean, this law could be passed, who knows what type of details are in that deal, the quantity amount, how to measure it, you know, instance, more data based on, you know, accidents and crime, et cetera, I think needs to be gathered from the states that have brought it in, and so I feel that we're a little too premature.
It's currently illegal to drive under the influence of marijuana, just like it's currently illegal to drive under the influence of alcohol.
But it's not as easy to test and understand versus, at this point, like alcohol is. The signs quite are evident, and there's no roadside, so to speak, is easily to be able to tell. And so I think that it's, in my opinion, it's a little premature, and I don't think that, once again, I got to go back to input from the residents, as this council's pushed on a lot of different issues of having input and thoughts, and I wish that we had, in the future, had a forum to be able to talk about that before the city council, you know, started pushing this issue with the state. So I guess, just letting you know my feelings and thoughts. Not that I'm opposed to it, I think there's a lot more to be learned before we go down this road.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I agree with you also. The main part of it is the taxation, okay? This is a weed that grows wild, but all of a sudden, these other states have made a ton of money off of it by taxing it. You remove that, I have no problem with it. It should be regulated, but when you start putting more taxes on individuals and human beings, there's a problem there, okay? So I intend on voting against it.
Yeah, and I just want to speak sort of in defense of the, how this came to be. About a month and a half ago, I had spoken that I had intended to speak with my colleagues and build support for this. I think nationwide, Gallup has been polling this issue for better part of half a century now, and finding that the metric has been very rapidly moving away from a fear-based understanding of this policy versus, you know, looking through peer-reviewed scientific data and going into incremental changes at first with the introduction of medical marijuana and the benefits from that. We've, we've seen cities like our own increase the thresholds for amounts that are considered civil penalties versus criminal penalties, so that if a otherwise fully well-intentioned adult makes the conscious choice to enjoy marijuana versus alcohol or tobacco, that they don't have to have a felony on their record for the rest of their life. And so I think we've seen this progression, and really, I see the industry now pushing it, and it's, I think the reason why I've melded these two things together is because, you know, the farmers are a part of this as well. We know that the, the markets continue to be lackluster and prone to federal trade policy when we talk about corn and soy, and throwing another crop in the mix that doesn't require so much money to produce, that has so many opportunities for the kind of industry processing that we'd love to see in Rock Island. You know, I could see factories come into this city to process hemp into fiber, process hemp into feed for our cattle farms in the region, our pork farms in the region. And we have had a very successful relationship with, with G T I as a medical marijuana dispensary. They've chosen Rock Island, and it's been good for us, and it's been good for them. And now I think that we see that legislation's been introduced, and so this doesn't support any sort of framework necessarily, but sends a message from those who are elected at the city level to our state and federal legislators to say, we want you to keep looking at this very seriously, because now we've got nine states that are functioning with comprehensive programs that, and I, and I appreciate that you want to see it not be taxed, but that's part of the deal, is that we, we take, we take that opportunity for more revenue. And this state desperately needs new revenue. You know, you look at anything that's been introduced in the past five years, and nothing has the potential like this does for both industry, economic development, and cultural attraction, because I can tell you anecdotally that young people are going to California and Colorado and Washington State, not just because it's legal, but because, because it is legal, it hearkens to this idea that you have a, a state that is implementing policies that are progressive and pointed towards the future. And I want those young people who are otherwise be entrepreneurs, hard workers, whatever, to be able to make that choice to stay in Illinois, because they'd have that freedom too, without fear of prosecution. So, there's a lot that goes into this, but it's really just calling for a heightened level of policy scrutiny to take level of policy scrutiny, to take it seriously that we could do it just as well in Illinois as Washington State. And if they're pulling in 256 million with their population, I think ours could be a game changer for Illinois, so.
I'd just like to say that I think we could have a public forum on this when the appropriate time comes. And that the taxation of legalized marijuana, if it is approved by the state, will do for Rock Island the same that legalized gambling taxation has done for Rock Island. We've gotten a lot of money that we've done a lot of good with for our city. So I'm hoping that if it does come to pass, that the same thing will happen with those tax monies.
The only thing is, is you can't put a price on lives. And if somebody loses their life in a car accident or some type of forklift accident or, you know, those type of things, or a marriage because of addictions, that's hard to put a price tag on. So, once again, I just want to be careful, that slippery slope that you go down. I understand that there's alcohol out there and there's gaming, there's a lot of addictive things out there. And it could be debated whether those should even be out there and what those cause and everything else. And as we've seen, those laws have gotten tighter and tighter over the years in how they implement those. So, you know, we just need to be careful what slippery slope we go with this in the future. You know, there are some states, there are some articles out there, you saw, you know, I saw, read an article, the governor of Colorado, I'm not saying the legislature, but the governor of Colorado put some second thought out there of whether it should be stayed legalized in Colorado or not. Now, he hasn't gone anywhere yet, but at this point, there's that buyer, if you want to call it buyer's remorse, so to speak, a little bit of, you know, some crime rates have gone up and accidents have gone up. And so whether it's associated with it. And I'm all for being on the leading edge. I guess as we said in business, we'd be on the leading edge, but not the bleeding edge. You know, you can sometimes be too far out there and leading that it's not safe. It's not a wise decision to make. And so let's, you know, once again, I just, I like, this one, I like to crawl before you walk and make sure that we're on that leading edge and not dangerous. So, if there's any other discussion. So, ready for roll call? Okay.
Alderman Parker.
Aye.
Ship.
Aye.
Geenan.
Aye.
Clark.
Aye.
Mayberry.
No.
Spaghetti.
Yes.
Five ayes, one nay, motion carried.
Okay, item eighteen.
Claims, A, report from the Human Resources Department regarding payment in the amount of $3,332.47 to Stuart Lofton of Rock Island, Illinois for general liability claim.
Motion to accept the report, authorize the payment as recommended.
Second.
Move to second, any discussion? Roll call.
Alderman Parker.
Aye.
Ship.
Aye.
Geenan.
Aye.
Clark.
Aye.
Mayberry.
Yes.
Spaghetti.
Yes.
Six ayes, no nays, motion carried.
Item nineteen.
Claims for the weeks of May 4th through May 10th in the amount of $1,078,231.53 and May 11th through May 17th in the amount of $2,265,426.17.
Move to allow the claims.
Second.
Move to second, any discussion? Roll call, please.
Alderman Parker.
Aye.
Ship.
Aye.
Geenan.
Aye.
Clark.
Aye.
Mayberry.
Yes.
Spaghetti.
Yes.
Six ayes, no nays, motion carried.
Item twenty.
ACH payments for the month of April in the amount of $824,380.2.
Move to approve the ACH payments, second.
Move to second, any discussion? Roll call.
Alderman Parker.
Aye.
Ship.
Aye.
Geenan.
Aye.
Clark.
Aye.
Mayberry.
Yes.
Spaghetti.
Yes.
Six ayes, no nays, motion carried.
Item twenty-one.
Purchase card claims for the period from March 27th through April 26, 2018 in the amount of $72,517.57.
Move to approve the purchase card claims.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Roll call.
Alderman Parker.
Aye.
Ship.
Aye.
Geenan.
Aye.
Clark.
Aye.
Mayberry.
Yes.
Spaghetti.
Yes.
Six ayes, no nays, motion carried.
Item twenty-two.
Report from the Human Resources Department regarding the self-insurance program for 2018-2019 recommending approval of the self-insurance package recommended by Arthur J. Gallagher and recommending approval of payment to Arthur J. Gallagher in the amount of $385,534.
Move to approve the self-insurance package and approve payment for the insurance renewals as recommended. Second.
Move to second, any discussion?
This particular item from the memo, it does not appear that it was bid, but we put out Mr. Gallagher's services to bid. Am I correct in understanding that? Is John here?
No, I don't think John's here.
He's not, Patrick, do you want to speak to that?
I didn't hear the question. So these prices, where were these prices put out for public bid, I guess, when we retained Mr. Gallagher's service? Yes. So, yeah, go ahead.
Like he went to five different carriers for competitive prices throughout the, like the public library. And rent was still below us. We had rent last year and we're recommending it again. He's off the market.
Okay.
Safety National, Workers' Comp, and I can't remember the other one, but Safety National was cheaper, so.
And Arthur Gallagher's an independent agency in town here, is who that is. It's not an individual, it's an agency. It's for Cleveland Insurance, okay.
But we put out the service that Arthur J. Gallagher provides the city for public bid. And then he himself went out to the market and put these out to bid, per se. Okay, just clarifying, it wasn't included in the memo.
Yes, Randy, could you or Pat explain to the people at home why we're paying Arthur Gallagher $385,000? What service that he's providing? Could you do that?
I think it's one of the insurance for the marina, for Workers' Comp, equipment breakdown, public liability.
Thank you.
Those are the components of the self-insurance.
Because the city of Rock Island is an employer, these are the insurances that we have for our employees, right?
Yes.
Or some of the insurances.
Is the council part of this policy too?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, roll call, please.
Alderman Parker.
Aye.
Ship.
Aye.
Geenan.
Aye.
Clark.
Aye.
Mayberry.
Yes.
Spaghetti.
Yes.
Six ayes, no nays, motion carried.
Item twenty-three.
Report from the Community and Economic Development Department regarding the 2018 list of city-owned properties to be included in the home program in an ordinance authorizing the sale of the 2018 city-owned parcels as identified in Exhibit A and waiving all real estate closing costs and all building permit fees.
Move to approve the list of properties for purchase through the city's home program as recommended and consider suspend the rules and pass the ordinance.
Second.
Move to second, is there any discussion?
There's a lot of properties on this list. This is, if all goes according to plan here, I know that we up here are going to be very happy with the outcome. I know that Chandler and his team are going to be very excited with the outcome. This is a, you know, this is that parcel-by-parcel development that we've been talking about in goal-setting and trying to get back to when we talk about back to the basics. You know, this is looking at the land that generates the value for our property tax base. And this is, this is how we do it. There's no other way to do it besides one parcel at a time. So, thank you all for, as we were talking at the last council in the study session about how there was bones to this program from the previous administration and we've filled them out, got something good to put on the agenda here, so.
As of today, there was about 20 people on the list to talk about this, whether they're qualified or not, and everything else, you have to determine, but there's been a lot of interest in people coming in and putting their name on a list to be consulted with. So 20 at this point, so.
That's good.
It is great.
And so far, we've got what, 27?
Twenty-seven different lots, correctly. This one, and that could be expanded in the future as the year goes on, we could acquire some others for different reasons.
And I talked to Randy about it, the three properties that were in the paper are not on that list. Now, they might be on there, what, next year or the next year? The ones that are getting demolished?
Correct.
They're not on there because people thought they could get those for $5, but.
That's correct.
Don't need that confusion.
No, that is.
Mention the property tax rebate program also?
We've had that in the past and there is a property tax, and I'm not sure, but Chandler, but you know, there was a tax. You want to talk about it Chandler? Versus me, mis.
In addition to getting a lot for $5.
That's correct. There's, there's monies out there to help with closing costs, there's monies rebated in taxes.
Yeah, the city has currently a program where the city will rebate the city's portion of the real estate taxes for new residential development where the owner has to live in that. And it's up to $10,000 or 10 years, whichever comes first. So we anticipate using this as, or that program as an incentive for this program as well, so kind of doubling up there.
So it's a double incentive?
Absolutely.
Yes, Chandler, what if two or three people come in and they all apply for the same property and they're all cleared to the bank? What did we do then?
I hope I have that problem.
I think you will.
I think so too. There's actually some very attractive lots, I think we'd have to look at that and understand what it is, what we're looking at doing and kind of first one in will win. We've had, as the mayor said, we've had a very strong interest so far, about 20 people have called up, very, very interested. Now, will they pan out or not? I don't know. But we're trying to tell everyone June 12th is our big kickoff where we will then, we'll have builders and bankers, or we talked to some of them about the program, about being there. And at that point, we'll unleash, if you will, the lots for the public to start looking at and trying to come in and work on a deal with them.
So we might have to have a lottery or a drawing or something.
I think we're going to have to figure that one out, yeah.
Thank you.
Problem, but sometimes a good problem, man.
Good problem.
Yeah. Thank you, appreciate that. If there's no further discussion, we'll have a roll call.
Alderman Parker.
Aye.
Ship.
Aye.
Geenan.
Aye.
Clark.
Aye.
Mayberry.
Yes.
Spaghetti.
Yes.
Six ayes, no nays, motion carried.
Item twenty-four.
Report from General Administration regarding an amendment to Chapter 9, Article 9, Section 9-128 of the Code of Ordinances relating to car owner responsibility assignment, CORA, and the elimination of enforcement of possession of less than 10 grams of cannabis.
Move to approve the amendment to CORA as recommended and refer to the city attorney for an ordinance. Second.
Move to second, any discussion? Get a roll call.
Well, yeah, I just, this is positive. I'm thankful that we finally got this, we discussed this months ago during a study session. And I just would like further conversation regarding CORA. I'm still not satisfied with the ordinance. I understand that we need to have that delicate balance between ensuring that our law enforcement have the sufficient tools to prevent criminal activity, but every single time I bring up CORA with a constituent, it is, I hate that ordinance. So, you know, how many of my constituents do I have to have tell me that they have paid too much money to get their cars out of the impound before we do something about it? I would, you know, I would encourage our staff to think creatively as to how we can create systems that do not allow criminal activity to happen while not taking away people's vehicles that they need to get to work, to take their children to childcare, to school, et cetera. So, thank you for this, but let's continue moving forward on it.
Roll call, please.
Alderman Parker.
Aye.
Ship.
Aye.
Geenan.
Aye.
Clark.
Aye.
Mayberry.
Yes.
Spaghetti.
Yes.
Six ayes, no nays, motion carried.
Item twenty-five.
Report from the Public Works Department regarding a joint grant application with ByState Regional Commission in the cities of East Moline, Moline, Rock Island, and Silvis for the Illinois 92 Joint Jurisdictional Corridor Study.
Move to commit to the Illinois 92 Joint Jurisdictional Corridor Study as recommended and authorize city staff to draft a letter of support for the proposed study.
Second.
Move to second, any discussion?
Question. One line in the second paragraph of the, of the report says the exact amount of the city of Rock Island's share is unknown, but it is not expected to exceed $20,000. In the recommendation, we're being asked to commit to the Illinois 92 Joint Jurisdictional Corridor Study and draft a letter of support. So does our commitment detail any expense up to $20,000 or does it not include a monetary value?
It would not include a monetary value right now because we don't know exactly what it is, but we have a good idea and that's where that maximum number comes from.
Okay, but we're voting tonight on making a commitment basically to draft a letter of support to the concept of doing this, but we're not including a monetary amount.
Correct.
Thank you.
To clarify, is this letter of support being directed to our fellow East Moline, Moline, Silvis communities to encourage them to join in, or is this a letter to the ByState Regional Commission saying that we support this being done through that organization?
Yeah, this is to the commission. I think everyone else is already on board. Larry, do you know if they're, I'm pretty sure, this has been talked about for many years, so this is a.
That's correct, they are on board.
Okay, and then, without getting too much into the details, what exactly is the purpose of this study? Is it looking at logistics, like routes for transportation? Is it zoning? What does the Joint Jurisdictional Corridor Study propose to provide?
We'd like to, one of the proposals is to turn everything into a two-way, you know, there's, right now, there's one ways through Rock Island and Moline and it's for traffic flow for business for residents. It's very inconvenient at times. That was all put together in the, you know, the days of all the factories and the heavy traffic at rush hour, both people arriving and leaving the factories. And that really doesn't exist anymore. And so we have multi-lane roads going in one direction with not enough traffic to warrant that. And in order for it to work, every city has to be on board with this. So it's really a look at that whole corridor of 92 all the way through from downtown Rock Island, all the way through.
Okay, sounds good.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
I was just going to say, I'm sorry for interrupting, that the general public might be interested to know that 80% of this is being grant-funded by the Illinois Special Planning and Research Grant and 20% is being matched by the communities.
And part of my excitement about this and hope it is a successful report that can help drive policy with Illinois DOT and potential city matching on programs for medians, for, you know, for treeed boulevards, to return these, you know, because I am so familiar with this corridor, I could literally put a blindfold on and make it from here to the ramp to get to 88. So, but, you know, the things that I see is, you know, you've got all these single-family homes on these corridors and, you know, people burn through here on these oneways, like they're just drag stripping out to the racecourse, you know? It's like, and you're so right, it was designed for a period of time where that was needed and, you know, a good way to help restabilize those neighborhoods and slow the traffic down and get people to maybe think about getting on the Beltway or other alternative routes that, you know, could divert some of that traffic. And then bring some new life back to these neighborhoods that have had to endure just kind of being these thoroughfares. So, yeah, I'm very hopeful for the long-term impact of this.
Okay, roll call, please.
Alderman Parker.
Aye.
Ship.
Aye.
Geenan. Mayberry.
Yes.
Spaghetti.
Yes.
Six eyes, no nays, motion carried.
Item twenty-six.
Report from the Community and Economic Development Department regarding terms of a development agreement with McLaughlin Body Company to assist with the purchase and improvements of their facility at three fifty Forty-Fourth Street with an incentive package not to exceed eight hundred thousand dollars.
Motion to approve the terms as recommended, direct staff to work with legal counsel to draft a development agreement subject to minor attorney modifications, and authorize the execution of the development agreement by the city manager.
Second. Move to second, Chandler, if you wouldn't mind, you can explain this, and maybe a few representatives.
Yeah, this project has been a year in the works, and I'm exceptionally proud of the efforts of the mayor, city manager, and my staff to, and Stephanie, to make this happen. McLaughlin's been very patient with the city as we go through the process we must go through with our TIF funding and things of that nature. Bob Anderson is here from McLaughlin, and I'd like him to kind of walk through the details of the deal, because I think they're very telling of the investment that's going to be made here in the city of Rock Island, and I believe he deserves the credit for really pulling this off, so.
Thank you, Chandler. First off, I want to thank the mayor, Randy, Chandler, and Stephanie. It was over a year ago that I think we started to meet on this project, and things, you know, took, and really, I think it was some real foresight by the city of Rock Island to understand, I think, the long-term value of having manufacturing jobs in this community. We, McLaughlin has deep roots in the Illinois Quad Cities. The company started in nineteen oh-two, we're in our third-generation active family members running the business. I'm proud to work for them. We've got manufacturing facilities, we originally started in Moline, we added the facility in East Moline some time ago, and then we've been in Rock Island since the late eighties, and basically are leasing that facility, the old Farmall plant. We made the decision about a little over a year ago, and that's when some of the discussions started, that right, right now, it wasn't cost-effective to have the two manufacturing operations in the Quad Cities. So we decided to look at closing down the East Moline facility and consolidating into the Rock Island facility. That's when the discussion started with the city, and we've progressed, and I think it's, you know, shows our long-term commitment to staying here in Rock Island, and I think it's going to be a great benefit, not only for McLaughlin Body Company, we certainly appreciate the support from the city, but then also, I think, for this community in general. Once again, thank you.
I may comment that they also have a plant in North Carolina, I believe, and, and, you know, the potential of taking those jobs and things down that direction also was on the table. So they have a new plant down there that's been operating that is out there. And of course, the commitment of retainment, retainment of jobs.
That's correct.
And, and including and adding some more in the near future.
That's correct, and we looked with this development project to, as you, as you know, that Farmall plant was probably, some of it dates back to the nineteen thirties, it's over five hundred thousand square foot. It's a good building, but it needs quite a bit of an update, and I think these updates are going to enable us also to attract new business and more jobs. And the nice thing about this is, is, is we, we've heard some of the conversation tonight, we need, we need good-paying jobs here, and we need manufacturing jobs, and I think those are the type of jobs that we can keep coming, building in this community as we go forward, so, thank you very much.
Thank you, and appreciate it, and I know the McLaughlin family, and once again, having a private business myself at one time is, this is a large dollar amount, there's no doubt about it, but the family's making a much larger commitment financially themselves personally, it's privately held, and so they're putting a lot on the line also in commitment to Rock Island and the Quad Cities, and so I commend the family for that commitment. I also need to commend and comment about Scott Christensen, as most of you know, the developer in that area, the Columbia Park. He's also helped make, him and his family have helped make this possible in, in the past years, of course, the lease rates and everything else. But this took a lot of, and I'll say creative financing, creative thoughts, and Scott was a very important part of that also, so it was a good team effort by a lot of people, that's for sure. Thank you very much for the commitment.
Thank you.
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
As you said, eight hundred thousand dollars is a lot of money. Is that going to be enough? Why wasn't it a million? Could somebody explain to me how they came up with the eight hundred thousand dollars?
The amount, eight hundred thousand, it was part of our negotiations, saying, okay, what, where are you? Where's the shortfall in the acquisition of the property? The renovations that you want to do to make your project or your property more efficient? And over the course of the year, we went through a number of different numbers, and back and forth, back and forth, and eight hundred thousand was the number that everyone agreed to would work well.
This is also the reason new market tax credits is one of the financial tools, and those banks that do work with that, that buy those, and the individual buy those, require a certain amount of percentage down in cash payments and that sort of thing. And so there is always an amount of cash that has to be on the table day one and closing, just like you, when you do a loan in a home or anything else. And so the family puts some up, and part of this is putting some up to, to get that equity in upfront. And all eight hundred thousand, as you know, is not upfront with us. Three hundred and eighty-seven thousand is upfront, which is in the TIF pot right now, so we're not going negative spending by any means. It is positive spending, and the rest comes out in the futures, we just talked about in the study session, the rest is coming out in the future. But the eight hundred thousand dollars meets that obligation that those new market tax credits and, and over a period of time. That's what, that's where that number comes from, along with helping with the renovations in, in, in the, in the building that's needed upfront.
Yes, Mr. Christensen, I know also, and have been there, with him and his dad, are you happy with this?
Yeah, I think it's a great project for the community. Obviously been a great partner and tenant down there for numerous years, and it was something that's future beneficial. Helps us to try to keep investing in Columbia Park down there, right where we did the Hill and Valley project a couple of years ago.
Right.
We both have roots here in, in Rock Island for a long time. And so it's, it's a project that allows both parties to accomplish numerous goals and continue spending. Oh, yes, it's, it's good for both parties.
We want people to be happy in Rock Island.
Sure.
Things that I want to say, you know, this is, obviously on behalf of the Sixth Ward, I want to thank both of you gentlemen for making this commitment, Chandler, to Randy, and to Mayor Tomes, and you know, I, I feel, you know, and Scott, we've, we've talked for many years, and the, the fact that I appreciate that, we have these goal-setting sessions, and we talk about the things that are important for our ward, and every year since I've been on with our goal-setting, McLaughlin's always been something I've brought to the table. And that's because I get educated by developers and folks who understand what's going on. Previous staff and previous administration were receptive to that, but this crew was able to be the right people in the right place at the right time when the company was ready to make that long-term commitment. And, you know, I just, this is such good news. I was so thrilled to see this on the agenda, and I, and I hope, now that we can talk about it publicly, I hope we've all done a good job not talking about this publicly. Now, tonight's the, genuinely a celebration of an investment in that part of the city that has so much promise for this kind of manufacturing, so, thank you all.
Thank you.
Mr. Christensen, you seem to be doing a lot of things in the Sixth Ward, and it's making it look really nice. I'm just saying, the First Ward is, you still have, come and talk to me also.
Today's environment, you can invest anywhere in the country, right? And, you know, our family has been well-supported in this area, and all of our investments are in this community. It hasn't just been Rock Island, but our largest investment has been in Rock Island. It's challenging, and every investment takes a public-private partnership, probably unfortunately these days, but that's what it takes from the city to other organizations in the city, but it works together, makes it work, and we're always open to new investments.
Well, thank both of you.
Thank you, yes. Are we ready for a roll call? Yes. Celebrate this.
All righty, Alderman Parker.
Aye.
Ship.
Aye.
Geenan.
Aye.
Clark.
Aye.
Mayberry.
Yes.
Spaghetti.
Yes.
Six eyes, no nays, motion carried.
Well done, thank you. All right, just as good as a good project, is this next one, item twenty-seven.
Report from the Community and Economic Development Department regarding terms of a development agreement with Celebrate to assist with the redevelopment of vacant property at three twenty-three and three twenty-five Eighteenth Street with an incentive package not to exceed fifteen thousand dollars.
Move to approve the terms as recommended, direct staff to work with legal counsel to draft a development agreement subject to minor attorney modifications, and authorize the execution of the development agreement by the city manager.
Second. Move to second, discussion. Chandler, what, you want to, the one, he was going to bring somebody up and talk about it?
Okay, I wanted to know who Celebrate is and where they're from.
He will let you know.
Okay.
We'll get right on that.
Rock Island.
Yeah, this is kind of the fun stuff we get to do. The McLaughlin deal was a very nice transaction, however, small business is very important here in the city of Rock Island as well. And Shalee Klunt-Martin, as I imagine you know her, has a very nice store on Second Avenue. She's done very, very well, and part of the, the celebration, if you will, with Celebrate is the fact that they've done well, and they're ready to move into a more permanent facility. And there's a space, a vacant building located at three twenty-three and three twenty-five Eighteenth Street. It's a wonderful opportunity for expansion and to have a more of a permanent home. And I'd like to bring Shalee up to talk a little bit about her business.
Hello.
Hello.
So this has been a long time in coming, too, and I know it's really small potatoes after that, but.
Just as important, believe me, please.
So I started this as a hobby two and a half years ago, just because of a need of gowns, dresses, for people that don't want to spend seventy, eight hundred dollars. It was really just going to be a hobby. We started off in Moline in a little three hundred square foot room, and, you know, at times have over two hundred people a day now on a Saturday downtown Rock Island, so the incubator shops have worked out great for us, but we definitely need to move. And this has also been a year-long project, and not one that's been enjoyable every minute, but I'm really happy that Mark has stuck with me. We're going to make this happen, hopefully.
Could you give an idea of what type of growth you've had?
Three hundred and some percent this quarter from last year.
There you go, see, there you go. There you go.
Very good.
Outstanding. Also a recipient of a Curly Flone, and help her work also grow, and so she's been great at that, and we shared a few moments together, a few tears, and we've debated back and forth, but and I know in this, in this program, I've committed even pick up a paintbrush and help paint.
I will hold you to it.
I know you do, I know you will. We've had numbers of conversations, and then I've committed to help, help with the project, so. Have there any other questions?
Well, just to be clear, the thrust of the business is women's clothing?
Well, we are also the only tuxedo rental place in Rock Island.
Could you pull the mic down towards your mouth a little bit?
Sorry, so we are also the only place that you can rent a tuxedo in Rock Island. This year, we were able to obtain the Rock Island GM Board's Marty Gra contract, which Ducky's had held for, I believe, thirty years, so we can supply you with tuxes. So prom dresses, homecoming, wedding gowns, bridesmaids dresses, anything for your formal event.
Excellent.
Yeah, Shalee, I just want to say congratulations, and thank you for sticking with Rock Island. As Scott had mentioned, you know, these days, businesses, the money, you could go anywhere. And I, I imagine, and where some, you know, frustrations along this journey of growth, but I'm, I'm really glad that our staff was able to work with you, our elected officials were able to work with you, because you're providing this really key service in the downtown. We need more of what you offer, these things that are so, so wonderfully human, right? That we need that service downtown, we need, we need other services that complement that, and I hope that they see your success and join in to complement, and take advantage of the crowd that you're pulling in.
I hope so.
Yeah, but thank you.
Thank you. The discussion, if not, we need a roll call.
Alderman Parker.
Aye.
Ship.
Aye.
Geenan.
Aye.
Clark.
Aye.
Mayberry.
Yes.
Spaghetti.
Yes.
Six eyes, no nays, motion carried.
Thank you very much. All right, item twenty-eight.
Report from the Community and Economic Development Department regarding terms of a lease agreement with Modern Woodman for the construction of a dumpster closure with the first-year lease payment not to exceed twenty-nine thousand, two hundred and sixty dollars.
Move to approve the terms as recommended, direct staff to work with legal counsel to travel, to draft a lease agreement subject to minor attorney modifications and authorize execution of the lease agreement by the city manager.
Second. Move to second, any discussion?
Chandler. Just because I don't want the, anything to be misconstrued about tonight's successes, that the headline reads, "City of Rock Island Spends Thirty Thousand Dollars on a Dumpster." Could you clarify what exactly all this is?
This is another project that's taken about a year to come fruition as well. The mayor's been really pushing this one. What we're trying to do is, when you go downtown, you go to Arts Alley, there's a number of dumpsters in the area, it's not very attractive, and it really starts to look cluttered, and it's just not inviting. So what we do is, we worked with Modern Woodman, we identified a spot, they own it, and we said, okay, let's do this right. Let's find a way to do an enclosure in, in the area, which would house a number of dumpsters within. And we decided, well, we looked at a number of different designs, from chain link with slats in it, to, you know, a wood one, we said, no, let's, let's do it right. And so we decided we'll do three sides, brick, it's block with a brick veneer, very attractive, capstone, and a nice gate on it. So it has some actual oomph, and it really, we're doing things right. The, the site, we are paying for the cost in that first year, the twenty-nine thousand, and it's a dollar thereafter, each year thereafter, for fifteen years. We thought that was a good term, mainly because we hope that there'll be something developed on that site within fifteen years. So Modern Woodman was very gracious in, in working with us to make sure we could get this done. The mayor was very involved, and we're very happy to be at this point.
Yes, I did bird dog this one. I didn't let him up on it. It was, yeah, a couple of business owners approached me about it early, and I took it on as, trying to push it, get it done. You?
I've heard it, too.
So, thank you.
Oh, wait a minute, don't go away. I had a couple of my questions answered before.
Yes, sir.
Counsel, so I appreciate that, but I, now I thought of another one. There are several businesses and several dumpsters involved in this. So do they all use the same refuse hauler, and are the, all the businesses on board with this?
The number of the businesses in that general area where we're looking at have been contacted, and they've expressed interest in participating with this. Do they all have the same hauler? That's not required for this, because the gate will be able to be opened by the hauler itself, and they can choose who they want. Will some of the businesses decide, you know, maybe it's better, because we don't generate a lot, to share a dumpster with somebody else? So any way to kind of clean up that area and make it more attractive, I think, is a real good win for us.
I think it's a good idea, I just want to be sure that the details of different businesses with different dumpsters and different haulers, if that was all worked out, or if it could be worked out.
Yes, I personally talked to the owners, and they were willing to share dumpsters, share the cost on them, and so.
The mayor even agreed to haul the trash.
I'm painting Shalee's place, so yeah, betcha, whatever works. We're out to get business in town and clean up, so whatever it takes.
Yes, sir.
Absolutely. Roll call, please.
Alderman Parker.
Aye.
Ship.
Aye.
Geenan.
Aye.
Clark.
Aye.
Berry.
Yes.
Spaghetti.
Yes.
Six eyes, no nays.
Thank you.
Motion carried.
Thank you. Item twenty-nine.
Report from the city clerk regarding the Plaza Event Application for Mothea Stevenson to hold tomorrow's Unity Day on Saturday, August twenty-fifth, two thousand and eighteen, from noon to five P.M. A request for the closure of Second Avenue between Seventeenth Street and Nineteenth Street, and a request for the waiver of application and permit fees.
Move to approve the event and request as recommended.
Second. Move to second, any discussion? Roll call.
Alderman Parker.
Aye.
Ship.
Aye.
Geenan.
Aye.
Clark.
Aye.
Mayberry.
Yes.
Spaghetti.
Yes.
Six eyes, no nays, motion carried.
Oh, I'm sorry, didn't mean to rush through that, that I didn't realize there was somebody there, okay, yes.
So I'm here on behalf of Darrell Gray, he would have been here speaking, or Mothea Stevenson. Stevenson, they had other things that they had to take care of, and he just wanted me to read the letter that he passed out to, I think Randy Tweed, Judith has one, maybe the mayor does. So it says, "Dear counsel, first, I'd like to say God is good, second, family is love, third, the best angel to, angle to approach this problem is a triangle. We continue to fight for justice for DeMar Bester. We also continue to fight to cleanse the community on ongoing violence that has crippled the hearts of residents who seen this once flourishing community lose economic opportunity for growth. A community that has watched its neighborhoods diminish in value and watched the cornerstones lose funding, which once helped underprivileged, underprivileged youth overcome their circumstances by exposing them to job trades and opportunities for scholarships they would have otherwise never known they were privy to. DeMar represents the good in this community. We have been told countless stories from those who he lent a helping hand to time and time again from all walks of life. DeMar saw potential in everyone he came across and he understood giving back is what makes a man rich within the spirit. This is why he is so beloved and the pain runs deep for those individuals because he left an everlasting mark on their soul. We present this council with a petition for lights and cameras and you openly welcomed the petition and helped us make it reality. We presented this council with the idea of honoring DeMar with a memorial bench and you helped that become a reality as well, which is truly a blessing from God. We have another request we need your help with. August twenty-third, two thousand and sixteen will forever be a day that haunts our very hearts, but it can also serve as a day for positivity in this community. With that being said, we ask the council to deem August twenty-third, DeMar Bester Day in the city of Rock Island. This will be a day of positive reflection, a day that can be carried out by his children in the future. A day where the community can come together and break bread and relax from the bonds with not only themselves, but elective awful, officials, officials, law enforcement. This is how we bridge the gap. This is how we make, we mend broken relationships and build trust. This is how we make Rock Island a family again, which is what DeMar is all about. If you notice, I speak of him in the present tense because his forever with us, he is forever with us and we will, we are his voice. People have asked our family why we fought, fight so hard for change. This strikes us as odd because we only know how to fight the rights, the wrongs. We are vessels guided by God who is held for our li- who, who is head of our lives. Make no mistake, the pain is indescribable, but we know Mars proud of all that we have accomplished. And we always see the bigger picture. So even in this untimely, even in his untimely passing, if any good can come out of this to help others, we know we are on the right path. We invite you to review our enclosed, closure with the outline and details of our vision for the activities that we will have on that, on that day for DeMar Bester Day. Sincerely, Darrell Gray."
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you for having us and we really do appreciate anything, everything that you have done for us.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Report from the city clerk regarding a sound amplification request from the Rock Island Public Library for their Libraries Rock Summer Reading Kickoff on Thursday, May thirty-first, two thousand and eighteen, from four-thirty P.M. to seven P.M. in their downtown parking lot, and a request for a waiver of the sound amplification fee.
Move to approve the request as recommended.
Second.
Move to second, any discussion?
I know Angela has extra signs for anyone interested in promoting this in their yard. I have a neighbor who won't have political ads in their yard, but they'll put a library one in their yard. So Angela, are they available at the main library office?
We only have a few left, but yes, that you contact me and we'll give them.
If you have a few, let's make it zero then. All right, thanks.
Okay. Ready for a roll call?
Alderman Parker.
Aye.
Chip.
Aye.
Geenan.
Aye.
Clark.
Aye.
Mayberry.
Aye.
Spaghetti.
Yes.
Six eyes, no nays, motion carried.
Item thirty-one.
Report from the city clerk regarding a request from the Friends of Howburg Civic Center Foundation for the outdoor consumption of alcohol for three events on June sixteenth, June thirtieth, July fourteenth, two thousand and eighteen, at the Howburg Estate.
Move to approve the requests for outdoor consumption of alcohol as recommended, subject to complying with all liquor license regulations and subject to being closed down early if complaints are received.
Second.
Move to second, any discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Item thirty-two.
Street closing and sound amplification request. A, report from the city clerk regarding a request from Jose Gutierrez for a street closing at Fifth Avenue between his house at nine oh eight Fifth Avenue and the alley east of Tenth Street on Saturday, June second, two thousand and eighteen, from one P.M. to nine P.M. for a family reunion. And B, report from the city clerk regarding requests from Tiara Wells for a street closing at Fourteenth and a Half Street between Ninth Avenue and Tenth Avenue on Saturday, June ninth, two thousand and eighteen, from two P.M. to eight P.M., and sound amplification for a block and graduation party.
Move to approve the request as recommended for items A and B.
Second. Move to second, any discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Item thirty-three is other business. We do have a few people that have signed up to speak. Is LeAnn Quinn. LeAnn Quinn's still here. It was, I think they spoke, I think that was part of the Mars deal, so. And then John Enright.
Oh, hi.
Yep?
Hi, I'm John Enright, I'm a local food vendor. I do all of the events, Street Fest picks, I do the events in Rock Island, Gumbo Yaya, You're Making My Weekend, all of these things. Been doing them for twenty years. Actually, quick note, I got my start, made the money for my first food stand, working for Mike Tomes at Tomes Pressler, thanks, Mike. And so for years, I, on and off, I had a food cart down at the district, was, I call him Johnny Chan, you guys know the guy that sells, his name is Zane Ewan, but that's what I call him, is what we go by. So I got to where, remember the days back in Chantilly Lace, you probably remember him, Mike? That's when the district was booming, okay? And so everything was good, food carts down there, and that's when I got the idea. So I put a food cart down there, but the district, it's changed over the years, so it got to be, it wasn't, it wasn't profitable. I went down there earlier in the year and some of the bar owners said, you gotta get some food down here, we only have the Chinese people. I was just in Austin, Texas, when you go down to Sixth Street and see that, that community, everybody goes to Sixth Street, this district could, could be that again. You have the nuts and bolts, where's everybody going? I don't know why they don't go down to the dist- I just haven't figured that out. But the weird part about it is that none of the kids come out till twelve-thirty. When I used to go to the district, we used to go out there at nine o'clock, where probably, I prob- I, I was gonna say, then I left at twelve, but no, I didn't, I probably stayed till three, right? But now they come out at twelve-thirty and, and the bars close at three. So we do have a, a food cart down there again now, serving hamburgers, we're serving hot dogs, we're serving soft pretzels, things like that, french fries, for the thing, I think it's a necessity. The problem I have with this, with the permit that I have, the rules and regulations are nighttime vendors may operate between the hours of nine o'clock from the plaza and have to close by two-thirty and then have to be off the plaza by two-forty-five. Now I have, I'm, I'm larger now, I do all the events, so I have some extra people. This is one of the reasons that we went down here. One of the reasons is, I think it's good that we have food down there, I think it makes for tourism, I think it sounds good, but what, what I'm running into is that, just for example, last weekend, I was down there and it was two groups of people and for a wedding, for some people from out of town, and the bars quit closing, they're selling alcohol at two-thirty. Well, they all come out, they're in line with my food stand, they want something to eat, cops come by and say, hey, it's two-thirty, you, you gotta close. And the bars stay open till three, okay? And I would like to be able to stay open and serve food till three. I think it's, I, I think it's good for the district, I think it's good for, for, also it creates more revenue for Rock Island, the money I make, part of it goes to Rock Island. And then the, the closing time is real, unrealistic, we go down there, we're trying to set up, set up a good operation, we have a deep fryers and stuff like that for fries, and it's, takes us an hour to set up, and then I'm, the window for shutting down is fifteen minutes, so I feel like a bank robber, just, you know, trying to load everything in the truck that, and the, so I don't know who, I spoke with Judith earlier today and I said, what can we do about this? Because it's, at this point, it's not economically sound for me to go down there if I can't have that punch at the end. Like I said, no one gets down there till two, till twelve-thirty and then so, but we, but, so you wait down there, you got two guys working down there, we slow, slow, we made a hundred dollars up till two o'clock, and then I think we can make a, it's not big money, but I think what I'm doing is I'm employing these two guys and I'm thinking, I'm putting a, a need for, we, they need food, you know, at two-thirty. All, everybody gets out there, has a hamburger, some fries, sits down, eats it, you know, makes a decision to get an Uber or whatever they do, but, and ones that have a couple beers, I think it's better to have a hamburger in your stomach when you're driving with a couple beers. But, so I don't know, it says vendor permit, I didn't, I talked to Judith, she said, come here and speak about it. I'm not sure who wrote this rule, I'm not sure how to get it changed, but I think it's a win-win all the way around if we can have food, and all really I'm asking for is just to be able to sell food for another half hour, then have an hour to close up. So I don't know who can make that happen. I don't see any, you know, you know, any, any negatives to it. Oh, you can? Okay.
October right.
All right, all right.
So you'd like to close at three, but then have an hour to pack up?
Well, the pack-up time's not quite as important as, as the extra half hour to be able to serve the food, when people come out, they quit clurping alcohol at, at two-thirty and everybody comes out and everybody wants to get something, just like me, I was in college, the macaroni and cheese, whatever you do, that's good food at that time, right? And that's what you need. So I'm just asking for an extra half hour to be able to stay open and serve food until the bars close. We can work on, I'm not really saying, hey, we need an hour, but no one's down there, so it really doesn't matter at that point in time. I think we can do it in a half hour, but fifteen minutes is, is really, was really pushing it in order to shove everything in the truck and, and come out of there. And what really I'm doing is, is a, a couple guys from Rock Island that work for me, I'm really employing them, because I have a big crew, but we, in between events, it gives me an opportunity to, to pay their wages, and yeah, it's just a win-win, so.
We'll take a look at it. Judith, you have his contact information?
Oh, yes.
Okay. We'll take a look at it. I think their rules probably came in when there were so many issues down there late and they wanted to clear people out of the plaza.
I will tell you one thing, and that is the argument, and because me thinking that why can't we sell food, that is the argument brought up by the police. Their argument is, we, no, if the food vendors are gone, the people are gone. And, and, and the argument isn't going anywhere because that's not really true. I don't know why they do it, but what happens to the kids when they call at the two-thirty, they all come out, they all congregate there. You know what I'm thinking? I'm thinking, some of the guys are looking for some of the girls to come out so they can have somebody to go home with, right? I, I don't know why they're all standing out there, but they don't have, but they can't, but it's, but it's an open plaza, so they're not clearing everybody out. It's not like, hey, you're at the concert and you gotta get everybody out of the concert hall so they can sweep up and if people want to leave. Those people can stay as long as they want. They can't kick them out, it's an open thing. But, and so I get it if it was that situation, but it's not that situation and...
Well, it is, three fifteen, isn't that right, chief? Three fifteen, everyone has to be off the plaza, so they do kick them out.
Okay, so there is a curfew, I didn't know that, but I knew it wasn't, I knew it wasn't until three.
We'll take, we'll take a look at it here, this is the first we've heard of it.
The process is real simple, that we, we take a look at it and then what the, the city manager does, he talks to the city, each one of the council members, kind of gets a feel of where they're at. If there's three or more that are, feel that it's something positive and whatever, then it comes forth on the agenda.
Okay.
For a change. And we also consult with the police department and, and if there's anybody else we need to work with, but...
Yeah, and I really appreciate you listening to me, I don't want to step on your toes, I'm not trying to, all I'm trying to do is, for me to have a food stand down there, and I think the food is, is necessary, I think it's a necessary thing, I think it helps tourism, I just like the people come from out of town, they have something to eat, but it's not, it's not, I, I need that half hour to make money. Without that half hour, it's really not practical for me to go down there because you don't make enough money.
Well, and if, and if that's the case for you, sir, then it's the case for anyone else who would be wanting to come in, and if we wanted to attract more of a presence of that food cart culture downtown, more food, more people, you know, so it's, I'm glad, I just want to say in short, thank you for bringing this to our attention. I, I've benefited from your services when I was in Augustana and the, and the years after, so thank you for the many nights of, of a, of a full stomach before going to bed, so thank you.
Now, a couple more things that I mentioned since I'm here and you guys, I'm, we're, if we can make this happen, we're working on getting a food truck down there. And a food truck means more professional, we're, now we're working out of a tent and just some fryers. We can get a food truck down there, once again, the atmosphere, see a little more professional, brings people down there. Another thing, like, this is what I do for a living, is I've done for a long time since, since Mike helped me out, but Aurora, different places like that, you guys have a wonderful Schweber Park over there. Every night in some cities, they have, they don't, whether it's a band, whether it's, they play movies or something like that, so the community, Rock Island, has a place to go. I don't know, I, you know, I, I don't, is there something that happens in Schweber Park every weekend? You see what I'm saying? To create that, where are you going? Going down to Rock Island, people like to walk along the river. This is a beautiful situation we have here, seems like, you know, and I'm willing to help out, this is what I do, get some food down there, get, get a band down there every weekend, so make it a, you know, where you, from, they usually do it, like Aurora does it, like three months out of the summer, and the whole town and the whole area goes down there and helps businesses.
And we got a marketing guy back there, so maybe you can go back and work with him.
Real, real quick, we do have, the park, of course, Park Board runs the, the park down there, they do have Thursdays, they have bands down there, free people.
Oh, do they?
And, and I assume we're doing it this, again this year, and I can't remember if it starts after Memorial or when it starts, but, but we do have that down at the park on Thursday nights, but if you want to help promote something, if you've got a band or whatever, talk to the Park Board, they're more than willing to work on getting things scheduled, and, and whether it be a food truck, and, and we have a new little park up on